I'd like to open up the meeting for the work session for independent 834 Stillwater Area Public Schools. It's November 14th, and I think we're set to begin. As you know, this is a relatively less formal procedure, so.
We're ready.
Administration, Denise, are we ready?
We're ready.
Yep, we're ready to go.
All right. Okay, well, tonight, the purpose of our work session tonight is to discuss Spanish immersion expansion considerations. And it's coming out of a request on October 10th, Don, there you go, thanks, that we explore options to gather information about the possible expansion. And so, we've tried our best to put together some options tonight about what we can do. So, to that end, we began trying to create a sandbox around this by making some assumptions as we went forward, so that we could at least have a framework. And the assumptions are as follows. We want to minimize disruption to other programming through any type of expansion. We need to plan for a total of 12 sections. That would be two sections for each grade K5. That would take us out to 22, 23. That would be in line with where we are right now as we build out the program. Our financial assumptions are based on the fact that all sections currently at Lake Elmo would move. And the staffing assumptions are based on our standard allocation models that we use for any school, or elementary school. The next one, transition program would stay at Oak Park, moving the immersion program, it would stay with its current times and its current space. And all costs, so any costs that we see later on during this presentation are our current rates this year. We did not take into account any inflation, so costs moving forward, we did not take into account any contract increases as the program would move forward. Every time you enter any type of that, those variables in there, then that changes a whole another scope of things. So, we need just a place to start. So, it'll be important as we move through it tonight, that we go back and forth to these assumptions, to make sure that we know the frame that we started from. Oh, and I lost my slideshow.
It's over there.
It's on the TV. It's still up.
Still up. All right, audience, you'll have to look over to your right if you want to see the slides. You may need to move closer, because it's a bit smaller. So, one of the things that we did, most people are aware of, we did a, we did an immersion, or a survey of our current parents of Spanish immersion. And so, what we wanted to do is just provide some context of what the current families are saying. And so, if you look at this slide, and so, for those people watching this, I'll read this, but 63% indicated that the location of Lake Elmo was important for their decision to enroll in the program as it is now. 21% of the people in the program would remain without transportation being provided. 51% would remain in the program if transportation were provided. 41% would remain if the hours were adjusted, so that we could provide transportation. And then, we have 60% of our current families live in the Lake Elmo boundary. 34% enroll alternately, and we have 6% that open and roll into the program. And so, one of the questions I'm sure is, how many does that account for? And in the bottom right of this slide, you'll see that there were 160 survey respondents, and there's 145 students enrolled K2 currently. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin, or Kathy, rather, staffing costs.
So, I'm going to just walk you through the staffing model that we use to estimate the staffing. Keep in mind, Bob said, "We use the 18, 19 salaries." So, what the current rates are for averages, with the exception of paras, I have the actual average for this year, because their contract is settled. We didn't try to estimate those numbers increasing over time, because we don't know what they are. So, keep in mind that these are, if these numbers were in place, there'd be some increase as you move forward through the years on implementation. Couple of things to let you know, what I did was, I took the Anderson staffing that we have in place right now, because it's the closest school that we have to the size that it would be to move the Spanish immersion program. Anderson is within 2 to 3 FTE, so it's very close. So, these numbers are not exact, but it should give you a pretty good idea. So, with custodial staff, what you'll see, so you'll see two columns. The right side of the paper is the full implementation cost, and the left, the middle column is the partial. What I did was tossed out the full implementation model, and then backed it off to 67%, because if eight of the sections are there out of the 12, you'd have about a 67% of your staffing there. So, I'm going to go down the center column with you, but just know that the numbers came from backing off of the full model. Does that make sense? So, with custodians, what we did is, we took the custodial staffing that was in place at Oak Park and used that. So, that is actual Oak Park custodial staffing, adjusted slightly, because it's not a full program, so there'd be less classrooms to clean and less staff there. And then, we also adjusted that number by 70,000, because we already have custodial costs of 70,000 that we're incurring this year. So, it would, this would be the increase over that current cost. Health services is basically our health paras and our healthcare specialists. And you will see that that is the same on both sides, because we're assuming that you still need the same amount of healthcare specialist and para time, regardless of how many kids are there. The clerical support is the same thing. This is the allocation that, of the clerical support that's in place at Anderson right now. Less teachers and kids does not necessarily mean less clerical support, so you'll see that number is the same as well. Special ed teachers is 67% probation of the full model. And then, with specialists, what we did is, because, let me go back, I skipped classroom teachers. So, there's two other assumptions in here that are important. I'm assuming that all of the classroom teachers for Spanish immersion are picked up and moved to Oak Park. So, I'm not costing any cost in there for Spanish immersion teachers. That is also the case with the Spanish immersion para that is in place. It's assumed that the Spanish immersion para will just be picked up and moved to another location, so there's no cost included for that as well. The specialists, because those kids already have specialist time at Lake Elmo, what I did is calculated what I would estimate, as best I can, the travel time, because you'd still have specialist time, but now they have to travel to another location to serve those kids. So, the cost that's included in the specialist is at, is basically the travel time, plus the school psych time is in there, and the nurse is in there. And then, the principal instructional coach and student advocate assumes a full principal, a full student advocate, and a half-time instructional coach, which is what Anderson has. And you'll see that those are the same, because it's a base model that we use for staffing for all of our buildings. So, if you get to the bottom of that center column, then you'll see it's about just over a million, 1.029 million, for the staffing portion at implementation. And then, once we have all 12 teachers there, and the two sections per grade, it would jump up to about 1.254 million. Any questions on that piece? Does that make sense?
So.
Sure.
Sorry. Is our per pupil expenditures approximately $12,000 right now? So, I'm trying to get a sense of, if we were going to expand the program, how many new students would we need to have enroll in the program in order to cover those costs? And I'm thinking it's around 100. Is that correct?
Well, so, what we typically generate in revenue, if that's the question you're asking, and I'm not sure that it is, but that's what I'm going to answer, and let me know if I miss, usually, the number I've used is $10,000. Secondary kids are slightly more than that, elementary kids are slightly less than that. But just, if you're just trying to say, what does an elementary student generate, assume $10,000. So, you know, if you had two kids come in, you have $20,000. And so, that's what, in addition to what our current population is. Again, just to provide context, they would need to be new students, because the transferring of students doesn't gain us additional revenue. They would need to be kids coming, either, that are not currently enrolled in our population.
Well, I'm kind of thinking that, you know, there may be some students that are currently at St. Croix Prep, for example, that might really want a Spanish immersion option, and they don't have that. So, we, that might be a place where we could draw from. That's just a thought.
So, just with that, the way the Spanish immersion program works, we wouldn't be taking kids that are not kindergarten and/or potentially first-grade students.
Say that again?
So, you wouldn't be taking, for example, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be just taking fourth-grade students or fifth-grade students. They start and matriculate up.
Right.
So, we wouldn't, from, for the example of taking from St. Croix Prep, you wouldn't necessarily be getting anyone back from St. Croix Prep, because they would have already started at St. Croix Prep.
Well, if there was a kindergartner that was, the parents were trying to decide if they wanted to go to St. Croix Prep or our school, that would be.
In that case, yes.
Yes.
I think at one of our recent meetings, we said, there was an age, if you were going to bring somebody over, where it's still doable. Does it go back to K always, or does it go back to first grade? Or kids, can kids be picked up along the way into the program?
You're right, kindergartner, first grade.
Okay. Somebody else had it?
But also, it'd be possible to pick up people that were Spanish-speaking natives, because those people, those students are in the classes too.
Mm-hmm.
It seemed to me, the figures that you had up there, because one was full and one, if you're going to do this, and I say that's a big if, but if you're going to do this, the big costs are upfront when you, when you start the original move. Because once you're there, going from there to full, it's, it's not as big. I think it was over 200,000, which is a big amount of money, but the biggest costs are when you initially do this.
Right. Keep in mind, too, that if, you know, the survey had talked about, 51% said they would go if it went to another location. If you do have 50% of the kids stay, keep in mind, these costs are going to be off, because we've assumed specialists move, and that specialist time is going to have to stay. So, you may have to add some specialist time, or some of those other costs that you only assume travel for, you might have to make some adjustments, so it may not work out this cleanly, if it was just half of the kids moving.
How many people, how many students are currently on the waiting list for Spanish immersion?
What did we?
Handful.
Yeah, it's a handful, I think six was the, I want to say six was, when it was all said and done this year?
Yes, I believe that's correct. I think it was four, one and one.
Am I close, Rachel? Six? We were on six? I have the number. I can pull it up while we continue on to make sure I'm right, but I think it was six.
Thank you.
Is there an attrition rate at all with the present program? You know, like I'm, normally, the traditional foreign language, you might start off with 60 kids, lose some who don't take second year, third year. Is there something similar like that here, or not?
Yeah.
Or it hasn't shown up?
We've only lost one over the three years.
Okay, which is very encouraging.
I mean, even with moving in and out, we've only lost one student. That's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Two quick questions.
This PowerPoint, is this available somewhere? Because I wasn't able to see this beforehand. Can we get this, can we get a copy of this? This presentation, can you get a copy of it?
I do have the answer to the waitlist. At the time of the lottery, which is when they do the initial draw, and it depends on the tier, but tier two had 15, and tier three had 11. So, in total, at the time of the lottery, the waitlist was 26 for 1920. After the application deadline and the lottery, so as the process worked its way through, we had one student in tier one, two students in tier two, and two students in tier three. So, there was five on a waiting list after we had gone through the process.
Right, so probably, people are making a different choice, and they don't want to continue waiting, you know. I would think that a lot of people would, you know, it's going to be an either-or, and if they get on a waiting list, they're going to have to choose something else. And once they choose that, they probably take themselves off, I would guess. But can I just ask really quick, too, the survey that was done? Was that people in the program?
Yep.
So, those are, right now, we do not provide transportation for that program. If it's, if I understand correctly, most, most of the students that are in the program now are natural Lake Elmo students. So, that's why the transportation piece is so important, because if you're at Lake Elmo, you can be in the program.
Right.
If you're not at Lake Elmo, it's really difficult, because we don't provide transportation.
Right, as the slide indicates, that Bob had spoke to regarding the parent survey, 60% are currently in boundaries, so 60% are receiving transportation, because that's their, that's their home attendance area.
Okay. And so, then, 40% are, have parents who are driving them. They're driving them to Lake Elmo.
There's more slides, right?
There is.
Yes.
So, the only thing, before we got off the slide, Mike, just to your question, just so everybody knows, these are, this is annual, this is the additional annual cost to what we're spending now. So, these are not one-time costs. The full implementation at 22, it's 1.2 million a year, to do it this way.
Assuming everything goes.
Assuming everything goes.
100% participation. Okay, we're moving on to transportation. There are essentially two options, because they provide two different dollar amounts for us. One would be the current bell times. So, this programming at Oak Park would stay at the 8:40 AM start with a 3:10 release. It does align with all of our elementary schools. Those bell times were slightly off at Stonebridge, but that's five minutes. In the event that the program moved, and we stayed with the model of our current elementary times, we would need to add somewhere between 8 to 10 buses. And you can see the estimated cost increase in the range, depending on if it's, you know, 8, 9, or 10. It ranges from $436,000 to $546,000. So, we're talking a half a million dollar increase to align with our current bell times. That also does not include if there's special needs transportation. That's just reflective of moving the kids in large buses and no special needs transportation that would be included. There is, and as you guys know, there is a driver shortage, which is our current fleet, so that would be stressful, to add another 8 to 10 buses to our, to our current system. Then, if you looked and said, "What if we can do it a little different and do the adjusted bell times," which is actually our tier three schedule, 9:20 AM to 3:50 PM, this aligns with our private, private and charter schools. We wouldn't necessarily need to add buses, but we would have a cost increase in the distribution. Essentially, it would be, for those of you that recall, we had a shuttle system in place for Marine and Withrow, and it would be dropping off at a particular elementary school, and then shuttling north. It would resemble that, so you have a small cost increase, but we do have the capacity, for the most part, on our buses in tier three. That tier traditionally has longer route times. You know, there's incidentals to consider, too, that are impactful, depending, you know, as we move forward. We don't want to get too in-depth, depending on the way the board wants to go with this conversation. If you do that model with the potential shuttle piece of it, we could be, right now, St. Croix Catholic is where everybody, like, kind of comes together, and they have staffing that watch that. If, depending on the number of kids that are participating, that could end up switching to Oak Park, of which then we would need potentially staffing to facilitate the transfer of students. I mean, again, those are, there's a lot of conversation here, but this just, at least gives you the first blush of what we would be looking at, as it relates to the transportation of, of the students. I will actually move on to the next slide.
Before you do that, Kristin, I'm just trying to understand it. Right now, kind of the movement where they go off from St. Croix Catholic, and so you're saying there's some people watch buses, help kids, that sort of thing. Who pays them for that?
Catholic. It's their staffing that's watching.
So, if we moved it to Oak Park, we're picking up a new cost. I mean, that's in essence what you're saying.
Can I have a clarification, Chair?
Please.
So, just to clarify your statement on this, on this slide, to keep the current bell times and have the students move over to Oak Park, you're looking at a pro, give or take, between 436 and 546 K per year?
Yes.
Additional in transportation. And in that, in that subset, 51% of parents who were surveyed said that they would accept that, that model, if you will. And on the other slide, which now the camera is on me, and I am, okay, thank you. Thanks, Don. The adjusted bell time, the adjusted bell time side, 66K, but approximately 41% of parents said that they would remain in, in the program. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
For those that have their iPad up, I just shared, if you have your email up, I just shared the slide deck with you.
Awesome, thank you.
Any questions, at least at the moment, for transportation? Otherwise, I will move on. The next piece, and Mike had referenced this earlier, it was a great segue, unfortunately, it was just two slides after he mentioned it, into there's initial costs that go into getting the program started. And so, this slide would indicate the estimated capital expenditures at Oak Park. When that building was closed, there were items that were moved to different buildings, and items that we could allow to let go, things we could do differently. And so, I wanted to highlight at least what would probably need to be done to get the building up and running, if you will, and then the additional improvements that would need to come eventually. Technology would be about 400,000. This would be inclusive of all classroom technology. There is not, there's no, I don't know if there's smart boards now, or what they're called, but there's nothing in a classroom anymore that would help students with their, with their learning environment. Playground resurfacing, $350,000. Now, we do still have money available to them in the bond for the surface. That's about 100,000, but the playground hasn't been upgraded at all for years. The media center, this would be books, this would be the shelving units, this would be where the media specialist sits. Fire marshal upgrades, we would anticipate him coming through and providing feedback on safety areas. Drop-off areas, $100,000. What this means is kind of back as it relates to the transportation component. When Oak Park was operating as an elementary school, we had a handful of bus, we had like six buses, regular ed buses, we had special ed buses, and, you know, vans, different things, but the regular ed buses were six. And now, we would be talking, depending on the model, potentially up to eight to 10. And so, where the carpool lane is, and the bus staging at the end, you know, you have the parking lot on the side, which is used by transition, and we actually keep type three vehicles there now, because with transition being there, and the storage of vehicles being there, and now, potentially, the addition of buses, we need to create another space to either move where the type three vehicles are for transition, and some, to be able to stage pickup in the parking lot. There would be something we would need to do parking lot-wise, if they stayed on the same bell time schedule. I'd say maybe we'd still need to do it, even if we went to the third tier, but we would definitely need to do it if it was at the second tier bell schedule. And what we would do is, then, there's a, like a basketball court that's on the other side of the building that hasn't really been used. We'd convert that into parking areas for staff and different things, where they could get in all the building, while we try to stage everything that's going on. So, the drop-off areas, we're looking at about $100,000 increase. Hallway lockers, lockers were removed from that building and moved over to Stillwater Middle, so we would need to add hallway lockers. Sight lighting, this was mentioned, even at, at times, even when the board was conducting their meetings there, that the sight lighting wasn't ideal. That would be $40,000. Staff relocation, again, just picking up, moving classrooms, offices, that sort of thing, that costs money. The kitchen and cafeteria would be an additional expense. We don't have, we need to get it up to, up to code again. We'd need to get trays, different things that go along with the kids eating. Everything with the music has, the risers, everything is gone, and then the nurse's office. So, you can see there, at least, to get it up to grade with the experience that the, that these students are having in another school, the capital cost, without deducting for the playground bond money, would be 1.31 million. And then, additional improvements, and we've talked about these in our long-term facility maintenance conversations, in our 10-year plan. Classroom upgrades, you're talking casework, you know, carpeting, those sorts of things. Converting the steam heat to water, the domestic water replacement. We know, even when that building was operating as an elementary school, that that was an issue. And then, with all of that work, you automatically have asbestos abatement and construction costs. And so, this is just an overview of what that would mean to get the building operating back in a prior form.
Before you go off that slide, why would there be more buses than there were when Oak Park was full?
When, because it's the, it's the area that you're drawing from, Liz. So, when Oak Park is running, we didn't transport out of an attendance area, so you just ran the attendance area. You could be far more efficient, as far as, we could fill buses to capacity, and therefore have less buses. When you're trying to cover the entire district, so from Marine and to, you know, you've got 150 square miles, you lose the efficiency of the number of kids you can fit on a bus, because we run out of time.
Okay.
Meaning, you know, we have a procedure that says we won't have a kid on a bus, pretty much from bell to the moment they walk in the door, longer than 75 minutes. Just given the sheer distance, we have bus, we would have buses, and again, making it up of 15 to 25 kids, because we can't fit kids in that timeframe of what we've deemed as acceptable, to be on a school bus. And so, you, just by, just based on that, then, because you're drawing from the entire district, you increase the number of buses.
Okay.
Because of that.
And then, when Oak Park was open, the buses just used the front of the building? So, are you saying that that would be different? That's where buses pick up and drop off were, just in the semicircle in the front? So, you're saying there'd need to be a different area?
What I would do, what we would do is, because we don't want, what we don't want is student traffic and carpool traffic interfering with, so, carpool, drop-off and pickup, we would, we don't want buses and carpool crossing paths. And Rutherford's are the best example. We've designed Oakland that way now, too, where you never technically cross buses and kids walking with, with cars. And so, if you use that entrance now on the side, where there was staff parking before, we also have transition parking over there, and we're going to have carpool, and with added buses, there's just not enough room. We'd have to take over for staff parking, the small basketball court on the other side, for staff parking, just to allow for room for carpool, or put transition over there, and then you still have the staff parking and carpool. That's why. So, that's what we'd, what we would be looking at, it's the sheer number.
Okay, sure.
Can you talk a little bit more about what you mean by classroom upgrades for 1.55?
Sure. Classroom upgrades would be door replacement, classroom restroom, that would be specific to, well, it's pre-K, K, the smaller, the smaller toilets, casework, student classroom furniture, teacher classroom furniture. I mean, we have different things in there, and we scaled down the number, but the upgrades would be, again, casework, door replacement, carpeting, potential restrooms, furniture, that sort of thing that's going in a classroom. Because the only thing that exists right now, and I know you guys have taken a tour of the building, is, is, is kind of what was left from all of the buildings.
Right, and when we toured for the community design team, we went and looked at the spaces that the transition students are using now, and they did not get any upgrades. Like, they're still using space that's designed for kindergartners.
Yep.
And so, I guess, to me, that is evidence that, while it's not ideal, we need to look at that as well. It's certainly optional. We wouldn't necessarily have to spend 1.5 million dollars on classroom upgrades.
Yeah.
That, these are things, to me, I wonder if some of these things are maybe optional things.
Well, that's why it says additional improvements. I'm not suggesting that you do the first column under total capital. I think you're probably going to need to. Anything under long-term facility maintenance, that does come under board discussion of what you have every year, to say, "Are we going to do this or not?" That's why it's listed, it was broken out separately.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then, capital expenditures, now, that's coming from separate bucket of money, it's not operating, so these are one-time costs.
Correct.
To do these upgrades. And would there, are, do we, we have money in a capital fund right now to cover some of these things, wouldn't we?
If you choose to do that, yes.
If you choose to, right, thank you.
Shelley?
That was my question, whether we had the capital.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to announce, I'm sorry I was five minutes late. I'm kind of also covering Director Burns tonight with questions. He submitted some questions, and I, I did get some questions from a Lake Elmo parent, and I promised her that I would do my best to ask a couple of them for her.
Please do.
So, and I think, Kristin, I'm hoping this is, this can go to you. The school board had to cut 2.1 million dollars last year. Where are you going to find the 600 K plus for this move? Currently, there isn't transportation for the Spanish immersion program because of funding. Wouldn't the first step be offering transition, transportation for students to the program at Lake Elmo? And I, I'm not sure who can tackle that, but I thought it was certainly a valid concern.
Could be.
I think those are, those are all board discussions, right? I mean, they're just, they're costs. We don't currently have transportation, we're aware of that, so that would be something that the board would discuss as part of whatever option you choose, whether you include transportation or not.
Kristin, question I have, just switching a little bit, and I'm glad you got that, because, you know, somewhere, just. because, you know, somewhere, just like, and where this gets very complicated very quickly is we're going to be doing things long range anyway in the future. And some of that is going to occur over there, or it's going to occur here. And, but, and again, this is just for purposes of discussion. If we were to move the program from Lake Elmo, we would free up how many classrooms at Lake Elmo for other needs? In other words, if 51% of the kids came with, and again, that may be too high, maybe too low, but that's what we've got to go on at this point. So those kids move and they go to Oak Park.
So right now, we have six sections, so assume six classrooms this year. Next year, we would assume eight classrooms.
So if half go.
So if half go, you'd have four.
Okay. So that would free up a lot of space there for other purposes.
It would, but now you're double staffing because our assumptions are based on all section, like no kid stays back. And if half of them decide to move, you've now, when the assumption is made that you move that many teachers, you're now split, you're now doubling the presentation that, or the slide that Kathy talked about staffing. So true, you absolutely free up classrooms, no matter what the model. We try to be the most optimistic as far as program participation.
Yeah.
And one thing I would like.
Oh, does that model then, and again, sorry for the interruption. Does that model assume that half the kids stay and you attempt to maintain the program?
It's 100%. Everything we've assumed assumes 100%. Anything, again, we wanted to present, you know, the most optimistic view of the program. And to do that, we had to assume everything goes, which is then the most cost-efficient model of moving the program.
It's also the least complicated to calculate.
Yeah. Jennifer. Thanks, Chair. You know, for me, I just look at this, you know, had we expanded Brookview, that would have been effectively no extra cost to the taxpayers and we'd be on our way now and almost, I don't know when, if, I don't know when that would have been complete, but I feel like pretty soon. And if we're using this as rationale to, you know, make space at Lake Elmo, I think, you know, I think it's, it's a little scary, especially given, you know, you're looking at total capital 1.3, okay, that's bad enough, but the, with the total amount, which is on that other slide, per year, you know, and I, that, where are we going to get that? And that was Director Burns's last question of many, but what budget cuts will be made in order to support the new general fund expenses required for the program moved, such as transportation and building administration? And those are things that, you know, given the fact we just made 2.1 million in cuts and we can't even afford our reading curriculum, or I'm sorry, our writing curriculum.
Can I just respond to that real quick? And I think, at least to try to mitigate some of that concern, I think the idea is, one, the Brookview expansion is separate from Lake Elmo, and, and I don't think that we were intending to change boundaries necessarily, so that if we did the Brookview expansion, it wouldn't really impact the crowding at Lake Elmo. This was an idea that was intended to try to free up some space at Lake Elmo. So it's sort of separate, in my mind, from Brookview. And the reason why you want to do that is because it's a great program and there's a lot of people who want to be in it, and we don't have space to grow it at Lake Elmo. And if we had more space, I think we'd have more people involved in it. And if we had more people involved in it, those new people coming into the district, whether they're outside the district or if they're at St. Cord Prep or another charter school or a private school or something, those people bring with them, they're 12,000 dollars ahead from the state. So that's where the money comes from.
I agree, and I like that and I appreciate that, Sarah. And I, I think you've got the survey saying half of the parents would move. That's not freeing up much space. Long-term, I'd love to look at expansion of dual immersion in some capacity. One of the community design team members messaged me and said, you know, what about expanding it at like Rutherford or in different parts of the district? And I think we're selling ourselves short by this, this one and done, that at an incredible, incredible expense out of our general fund, which is constantly strapped, versus thinking about, you know, long-term, how might we build that program and add residents from all over, all over the place, basically, right?
I completely agree with you, 100%. I think there's a lot of different ways that we might be able to expand this program. This was just one idea, and the added benefit of talking about it now is that it would possibly help, the question I'm raising is whether it would help alleviate the crowding at some of the other buildings that we have in the south. If there are students at Brookview or students at Afton Lakeland or students at Anderson who would like to be in the Spanish immersion program, and they can't right now because they can't do transportation, and if we invited them and they, and they came, that would free up space in those other pretty full buildings as well. So that's the only added benefit of this thought.
So adding on to Brookview.
Liz, and I'll go back to you.
The Brookview thing, we have to remember that of the eight classrooms we're talking about, five of them are going to go, five of them are already in places where they're not supposed to be, so the net of classrooms we're adding is three. And then as far as putting Spanish immersion in another school, I don't know that any of them have the space.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, we should probably get.
Yeah, and what, you know, I want to clarify the capital question just because I cut my thought short and I don't want to make presumptions that my, every, that people are living in my head. That doesn't typically work well. Anyway, when I'm speaking to the capital budget and saying, yes, we have the money there and we can do it, please be aware that, you know, it is one-time money and that once it's spent, it's gone. And as we work ourselves through the long-term design, it also could be money used in other places. So once it's spent, it's gone. And it possibly could have been used in other spaces, so I just don't want to get the impression like, oh yeah, we have it. It might be, you know, but you've used it here, or we might be able to do something to offset what the design team does for the long-range projects. So just kind of maybe, just that, maybe that's more of a complete thought that I have. The other thing that I would like to mention, and I recognize that it's not about program growth, and it's not about bringing kids in, just to the sheer, can we alleviate pressure off of Lake Elmo? We can through existing boundary changes, and I, and we've talked about that at the finance working group too, that we could do boundaries without, you know, without adjusting a program to alleviate pressure. We can do that, we can make that work. And so just so everybody understands that, again, it's not addressing, what I had believed was your charge of having a program to be able to grow and do different things. It's not talking about that at all. It's merely talking about addressing growth.
Yeah, and I think it hits on something Denise said earlier too. This is one of many options. There's a lot of different ways to go. What strikes me, because I like the idea too, of perhaps even looking at expansion other places. The hard part is, I think one of the reasons Lake Elmo has been a success is half the students are Spanish-speaking to begin with, and that's really, if you're kickstarting, boy, that sure helps.
Yeah. I will, just because I'm trying to watch the time and be cognizant of where we are in the discussion, I just want to kind of draw your attention to the last slide, which is the summary slide. And you can see just the breakdown of what we were talking about. Maybe one thing I'd like to just remind everybody is when looking at the staffing costs of a million dollars, that's with the entire program moving. Now, if you assume half are going to go due to, due to a change in location, you can probably add about a half a million dollars to that number because now we're double staffing. We're, you know, our specialists are staying at Lake Elmo, half of our sections are still staying at Lake Elmo. So that, again, that is the most optimistic view of 100% participation moves to Oak Park. Otherwise, that number goes up. In talking about the increased cost for operations, this, this was added because honestly, there was no slide to put it into. So there's this natural utility costs that go along with what we're currently doing, garbage increase, water usage increase. There are different things happen in a building when it's occupied by students for 172 days, and so that's reflective of, you know, the 30 to 50,000 dollars. It could be, not that we don't plow, but it, all the services amp up as far as utilities go when you have more bodies in a building. And then this just, then you can see capital, again, assuming one-time money, that's why it becomes zero in the second column. Long-term facility maintenance, again, yes, it is a choice of what you want to do, but then you're provided the transportation range as well. And so you can see kind of the range of what we'd be looking at of all costs, whether we take the minimalist approach or, you know, go full speed ahead with everything, that's what you're looking at. And again, I just can't explain more, and we talked about this as we were working ourselves through the presentation of, you know, the what-ifs, what if half goes, what if, how do we show that, how do we present that? And, and, and given this, given our charge of just trying to present what this could look like, we assumed optimism, but I think you need to be aware that if it doesn't, if we don't get 100% participation, the costs go up.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? For the audience's sake, and perhaps most of you know that, we are going to close the meeting probably in about 10 minutes because the board is going to meet and close session on negotiations.
Jennifer.
Chair, I'm going to take a stab at this. This is another from Director Burns. So Director Burns is asking, what would be the expected enrollment losses with the move of the program from Lake Elmo to Oak Park? And then he added an A and a B to this, among District 834 residents, and also among potential open enrollees living in densely populated areas adjacent to Lake Elmo. And he made the little sub-comment here, the Lake Elmo location for the program is much closer geographically to the population, to this population than District 834's Nueva's Fronteras. Well, I hope I got that right. Spanish immersion program in Cottage Grove. So I thought it was, I'm not sure, I thought that was a very good concern. I don't know how that can be answered, perhaps not today.
Bob, you, didn't you touch on that a little bit when you were talking about where the present students are coming from?
Well, we have, Kristin has a list and we track both in district and out, out of district where they come from. I think it depends upon, again, what assumption are you going to put around it? So if you assume 50%, then do you take those numbers? And regardless of their, if they're an altenrol or they're an out of district, you cut them in half? I don't know. That's going to be hard to predict how many, I mean, it's a family choice, so I don't know how you predict that without specific.
You could start from just looking at who's doing that right now, coming from out of district and going into.
Do we have those numbers?
Well, we do. We have the numbers that are coming from out of district. Unfortunately, I haven't necessarily pulled the location, but I will go off of recall that I believe we have. In, in Lake Elmo, in Oakland, just as a general rule, certainly, certainly the majority of the population that we see, at least in those particular two schools, are coming on in request from 622, which is North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale. I would imagine that would be reflective in the Spanish immersion as well, given the proximity of the programming to the boundary. Again, we have 82 out of 144 students that are better Lake Elmo. And then you have your smattering, right? You have, no, I have, that's the sheet I have. You know, you have five to six percent coming from Afton Lakeland, you've got, you know, four to five percent coming from Brookview, so are those too south and absent of.
Wait a second, I guess I'm wondering, weren't you asking for, from out of district?
Out of district, again.
Both, yes, for both.
But out of district, like I say, it's a, it's a presumption. My presumption is that most of our out of district is probably coming from 622, we might get a few from 833 with this, which is South Wash.
But are we talking about a huge number? Are we talking about probably a few?
The number is, three, four, six, six? We're going six?
Okay.
That's close enough, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then can I ask also, since we're talking about numbers, how, you said there are about 145 in the program now, K through two. So that's two sections per grade.
Correct.
So if we were going to expand, we'd be starting with a section of kindergarten. So it's not like you, you're going to just add all of those grades. You start again with a third, like you'd have a third section of kindergarten, but not a first grade necessarily.
Correct.
And then it would just continue to grow right behind. And how many, so one of the things I have heard from community members, and I really do deeply understand and respect, is the, the fact that the program as it is now is dual immersion, and that suits the population at Lake Elmo. And a lot of people don't want to upset that balance, you know, to upset that sort of cultural experience that's already been established there. And I think moving it probably would be a big, you know, that would be a big, big change for a lot of people. What about the idea of keeping a portion of, or keeping some part of the dual immersion program at Lake Elmo and expanding Spanish immersion that's not dual immersion elsewhere in the district?
I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know, I guess the, I'd ask, what if? It depends upon where you put it, depends upon how many, now you're back to starting from scratch. So let's say that you keep everything at Spanish immersion, now it's no different than moving any other program. Are we starting with kindergarten? How many sections? Where can it live? And how long can it live in that building before it has to then be moved somewhere else? And what's the long-range plan for that?
And do we know how many of the current students of the 145 that are there, how many of them are native Spanish speakers? Do we know what that ratio is?
So we currently have 17 total Spanish language speakers in the program.
Okay.
And, yes, we have a higher rate though, if you're just looking at ethnicity in the program, than Spanish speakers.
So there are non-Spanish, not, there are ELL students that are not Spanish speakers?
Just students.
Just students.
Variants of ethnicity.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay.
One of the things too, the board might want to consider, you know, we talked earlier about not providing transportation for a whole lot less than you're seeing up there. You could expand the program by providing transportation and switching how many sections you might eventually have, Lake Elmo be a Spanish immersion school.
Fully.
Shelley.
Just sorry, but back to the, back to the, the money. So are we, so is it safe to say at a minimum 2.4 million dollars, 1.3 out of our total capital, between 2.4 and 6.7 to get K to three implemented by fall of 2020? And then we would have to go into a cut situation out of our current budget? Anyone? I don't know even.
The numbers that are on this screen reflect what I heard you say. Yes, it's the assumption that if you picked up that program, as is, all, and you, and you made it K3 next year at Oak Park, our estimation, depending upon the choices you would make, would be between 2.4 and 6.7. And then the following year, and two years out, so that when it became a true or a full K5, your annual costs would be additional, addition to what we're spending now would be 1.3 to 1.8 a year.
Every single year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important too, and Sarah, I think you brought this up, I don't, I want to make sure that what doesn't get missed in this is that in addition to just the simple cost and the physical plant, there's a lot of cultural change, time, energy, decisions that have been made over a long period of time to get even what we have as a dual immersion program in place to where it is now. Things like ensuring that we have staff that speak the native language, that we have more than just our licensed teacher. So the reason I bring that up is as we, one thing I just want to make sure, as we continue to explore ideas like this, that when we take a program that is as large, I would say, in-depth as this one is, maybe not in numbers at this point, but there's a lot that goes into the actual culture of the building that surrounds just even a K through two program right now at Lake Elmo. So just, just make sure that it's not, we're not, it's not just about the numbers.
Yeah, I agree with that. And can I say, sorry?
Sure.
One of the other thoughts that I have about this program that's a little bit of a concern, and I don't know very much about how the, this type of program grows through the years. So right now, if we just have across our district.
So right now, if we just have across our district, two sections of Spanish-speaking classes, what does that look like when those students are in middle school? You know, when they hit seventh grade, are they still, is it still two sections? And are they kind of like separated from, I mean, what, do we have?
Those are the types of, those are the types of decisions actually that we would start planning and we've talked about that we'd start planning on this year as we move up because some things that have to be decided are specifically, what does the programming look like? Minimally, what it typically looks like in districts at the middle level is you look at, what are the courses in the middle school that you want to have a dual licensed teacher? So, or a Spanish-speaking teacher in this case, that can teach Spanish or can teach science. For example, in my experience, that's what we, we had a teacher that taught math and a teacher that taught science, but they also spoke Spanish. So they were able to teach those sections in Spanish. That's one way of, of doing it so that those cohorts of students are at least getting some, if, as I would imagine, all the way up to all of their courses still in Spanish. But those would be the types of plans we would start making now as we move, get ready to do a, into third grade, right? We're getting two years out, which means we need to start thinking about staffing and licensure and how we're going to post positions, no different than we did when we were planning for the kindergarten year. It was, you, you work yourself up to get to about that 18-month mark so that you have all of your ducks in a row, so that you, you know how to communicate to families. This is really what this is going to look like. We also need to decide where. What, what middle school is this going to be in? Is it going to be in one? Is it going to be in both? Is it, what does all that mean? The other thing to remember with that is depending upon how many students, that also dictates how many sections that you're running and does that have implications for how you're staffing the rest of the building? So there's a lot that goes into it.
Sorry, yeah, and I think there's some attrition too, you know, of students that decide to not stay.
There could be.
Over time, so then that is challenging as well.
I have a question. It's more rhetorical at this point, but I think it has a little bearing on.
So should I not answer?
You don't have to, but I can throw it to the group. If we extend this out, say even for the next five, six years, and every year you're, you're adding classes, are there additional costs to that than if they were just doing traditional?
So I would say yes.
Rhetorical question, Bob.
It doesn't sound like a rhetorical question to me. I have a feeling people want to hear an answer to that one. There are costs that go when we expand into the next level of classroom. For example, every year that we add a section to the progression, there's going to be a classroom cost to that section for appropriate books, appropriate materials, because they're not just sitting on a shelf right now. So the answer is yes.
I just, thank you for making that, that statement, Bob. I wanted to put an exclamation point on that. While this presentation was mostly about dollars and figures, we absolutely cannot lose sight of the fact that these are families that have been, it took, it wasn't built in a day and to dismantle it in a day would be, would be very disappointing in not giving a voice to these families. It took a long time to create the culture of this building and that program. And while the, your presentation didn't touch upon that enough, I want to thank you for raising that. I agree wholeheartedly with that.
All right, we're going to adjourn to closed session. We will reconvene down here at 6:00.